The 4:40 work session, which is a CMOM discussion. Ben Clark, would you please read the role?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morris, Mr. Jones, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Amos, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Welper.
Here. Most approved agendas proposed?
Said.
Most has been made with the proper second, all in favor. I opposed. We have an agenda. Is Craig here? This is being televised, right?
Correct.
Okay. We need to get these screens turned off.
You want the screens on when we're televising them?
Yeah. I've gotten input from audience members and they like that as well. So you guys get to look at yourself and they get to look at you from afar. So, all right, we have a 4:40 work session regarding CMOM. And just prefacing things, prior throughout the campaign trail, talking to residents and folks, a lot of people were concerned about where we're at with our CMOM program, our consent decree. So John has been doing an excellent job working on our behalf. And now on our website, we actually have a general summary of what's actually taking place, so people will be able to utilize that, council. You will be receiving reports as well. And we will also just continue to have quarterly meetings to get information out to all of you and the public as well, trying to increase our communication. So without further ado, John, could you take over?
Thank you, Mayor Hart and council members, for this opportunity to get in front of you and have a dialogue about the CMOM program. CMOM standing for, I'll try not to stumble on it, Capacity Management Operation and Maintenance Program. So the CMOM program is mandated by the consent decree that was executed in October of 2014. And in the consent decree, they talk about reporting requirements. And in those, the requirements call for a CMOM report to be submitted annually, the first one that would be due at the end of this year. It also calls, that CMOM report would be a summary of all the activities that have taken place in the last year. It also calls for keeping the existing program manual up to date. And we're doing that, we'll be doing that twice a year. And our schedule for that will be doing that in April and October of each year. But what's not required by the consent decree, but what we are doing currently, is doing monthly CMOM reports. This is our team that's been put together, and I'd like to recognize the people that are on that team, is Brian Rath, the lead operator at the wastewater treatment facility, Mark Brandis, CMOM specialist, Laura Wolf, who's here today, CMOM technician, and myself, along with, we also include Gary Luck and the six televising crew members that he has out there that are part of that overall team. So we decided back in October that what we would do is put together monthly CMOM reports to help not only show the regulatory agencies what we're doing, but also to help us keep track of what we're doing on a monthly basis. So we put one out in October, November, and they were a little rough around the edges. And now we've arrived at the December CMOM report, and that's why we're here in front of you, because we feel more confident about what we're doing, how our reports are looking, and we're, it's time to come and tell you everything about what we're up to. So what we're going to walk through are the items that we included in the package for the work session. And those items were the Iowa DNR monthly operation report. That is a, there was a cover sheet plus an Excel spreadsheet with eight spreadsheets in that overall Excel file. What also was in there was a January 14th letter to the Iowa DNR. The subject title was the December 2015 bypasses, SSOs, that stand for Sewer, Sanitary Sewer Overflow, and Basement Backups. That was a letter to the DNR. The third thing that was in that package was the December 2015 CMOM report. And the fourth thing that was in there was the January 15th, 2016 cover letter to the EPA with all these attachments included. And as Mayor Hart mentioned, we also worked together a summary of this December 2015 CMOM report on the website. So having said that, I'm just going to walk through some of those documents that are out there. And please stop if you have any questions. So the Iowa DNR monthly operation report for December 2015 has all the data on the influent flows, effluent flows, water quality, in, out, everything. It's a document we don't expect you to know and to review, but the regulators are the ones that want to see that. And so that's giving them full disclosure on everything we're doing. We're required to do that anyway, to submit that to the Iowa DNR, but now we're submitting that same document to the EPA and the Attorney General's office, and actually to Mayor Hart, and now you guys all have that too. So read it and ask questions. And I'm sure Brian Rath, our lead treatment operator, or Brian Bowman, or some of the other very knowledgeable people out there can answer questions about that much better than I could. So if you have any questions, I will get you answers on what's happening out at the wastewater treatment plant. The second thing is that January 14th letter to the Iowa DNR. That is a monthly letter that goes out and reports on the December bypasses, sanitary sewer overflows, basement backups. And as you know, in December, we had a record rainfall event, and we had a normal amount for that, for that event, it wasn't, we did pretty good, I would say, as far as how many overflows and bypassing events that occurred. But they're all spelled out, and I think you've already, we've already been through that, that we had, again, problems handling the infiltration and inflow. But the next document that was in there was the actual 2015 CMOM report. And here's where Laura gets to get up and tell you about some of the stuff that's in there. Laura has been the author of it, she's the keeper of all of the files, and has been doing a great job of putting these reports together, and I get to put the cover letter on and send it out. So Laura?
So in the first half of that CMOM report that goes out, we covered the consent decree requirements. Sorry. The consent decree requirements, the first one being the short-term remedial measures, which covers SSO signed and public notice. We talked about the five SSOs from December. We have the IDNR and Waste Management forms for those included in the report, as well as date stamped photos of the warning signs we placed out in the streets. The footing drain removal program is in that section as well. We get a report from building inspections every month to talk about how many drains were disconnected or found in compliance. And then Ben Wagner updates our map, which we've got a couple printouts up there that you can pass around if you want, otherwise they're in that report in the appendix. The footing drain will be the one with all the red on it, and it just shows District 1, which is Service Areas 15 and 16, where they're doing that program. And we are about halfway done there. About 2,000 properties have been found in compliance, or passed.
Do we, the average cost, I know there was some conversation about $5,000, $7,000, $2,000, $1,000. Has that average been under, under the $2,000 which we were projecting?
That's really a question for Craig Clark.
I have not run that for a little while. Last time I did, I think it was $2,136 was the average. If they are getting more work done than what is required is what usually brings that up over that amount. So I think it's definitely right around the 2,000 mark.
Okay, good. So they've got some other things fixed along.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of Craig. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Craig, are we going to help those people that did the footing drain just before the ordinance was passed? We've talked about this before. How are we going to get that done?
Just want to talk about that there.
We've had a, we've had a conversation about it, still working on that. There's a gentleman, I believe, who contacted you and the councilman Schmidt as well, but...
There's only a couple of people.
Yeah, we have to, we have to be very careful in the way that we do that. So we've been trying to come up with some scenarios to get that done. So as of now, we haven't made a full determination agreeing before council, but we've been having conversations about it.
But we're working on it.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Definitely.
Thanks. I have one other question for John. John, maybe, has the consent decree been approved by the federal court?
Yes, there, we recently received a judge's signature on that. It's signed off by the judge, so it's all...
Can we get a copy?
Sure.
Could you send that to me? Okay. We'll get one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Also in that footing drain removal section, we talked about directing citizens towards the engineering department's website, or their portion of the city website. There's a lot of really good information on there regarding rainscaping and rain gardens, giving citizens ideas about what they can do with all this extra water that's on their In Section B, we talked about the CMOM program twice a year. We've got our CMOM manual, and twice a year we need to review that and prepare a report showing any changes or updates, and that's submitted to the EPA DNR as well. John talked about the annual CMOM report that we have due at the end of this year, and yes, this monthly reporting is making that annual report a lot easier. And we have copies, we submit this report 15th of the month to EPA, DNR, city officials, and then it's also available at City Hall and the library in Waste Management if the public wants to come and take a look. In Section C, we've got the SSORP, the Sanitary Sewer Overflow Response Plan. That's where we talked about the five SSOs from December. These are all posted to the website as well, information, all the details for each SSO, and then that notice is also sent to the Courier and Health Department. Kind of a big deal for the December event that we talked about in this section as well is how during that event, the flow equalization basins at the plant were filled to capacity, and some of them transferred to the satellite basins, but we did not bypass at the plant. So that's good. We're working with AECOM down to that next section, the rainfall and flow monitoring. We're working with AECOM to get rainfall gauges and pump station flow monitors. We're meeting with them again this month, I believe, to further those plans. And then Section E is the sanitary sewer condition assessment. Again, on those graphs that went out and in the appendices, the big focus on Service Areas 15 and 16. In Service Area 15, we're all done televising rating, that's complete. In 16, we're almost done. I think there are 15 or 16 segments left to be televised and rated. And that chart also shows, they're down right now, but it also showed then the, how far we were in Phase 1 and 2 of the CIPP lining and the manhole rehabs. That section also talks about the lift station condition assessments. We did a preliminary assessment in December. We're working on meeting the rest of the requirements from the consent decree for The televising plan for 10, 11, 12, and 13, we're just going to review the footage that's already out there, and we're going to use the NOQ system to rate that. And then we're going to start in Service Areas 18 and 19 televising with that new equipment. That, along with like the smoke testing that was done, that'll all help in putting together Phase 3 of that CIPP and remedial measures. And I think John can take it from here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Amos.
I'm kind of new as far as from the sanitary sewer. When you say televising, you're actually taking a camera and going down into the sewer system and actually videotaping it to see what structures are bad and those types of things?
Yes, that's right.
Televising this? Okay, thank you.
That's right, council member Amos. We have one brand-new televising truck and two rehabilitated ones that have the latest and greatest televising equipment for checking out the interiors of those sewer systems, sewer lines. In addition, we've been working with city engineering, Eric and his crew, have been great to work with, of identifying suspected cross-connections between the storm sewer system and our sanitary system. They have developed a very thorough report and are looking at the schedule for where, by which they will go out and eliminate those when they do street reconstruction projects. And also the, those that don't, that aren't on the schedule maybe for their street projects would probably be added to the overall master plan for improvements that, because it's very important to eliminate those storm sewer cross-connections to the sanitary sewer. That brings us into the discussion about some of the other items, the consulting engineering, AECOM, the representatives are, from AECOM are here, if you have any questions for them. But they're working on the hydraulic model that's due by February 29th to submit to the EPA, and they're on schedule for meeting that deadline. There's a, there was requirements of the consent decree that have to be met about specifically what storms to model, and they're working on that right now. In addition, they will be submitting a proposal to do a capacity assessment that's due, I don't know if the due date isn't in there, but it's a ways off. Capacity assessment for the sewer system. And then the master plan, which, the overall master plan is due at the end of 2017, so almost two years out from right now. Talk a little bit about capital improvements projects. We are working with AECOM on a Phase 3 CIPP and remedial measures project. We're meeting with them tomorrow to identify the areas that we should be looking into, primarily focusing on Service Areas 18 and 19. We're going to try to finish up everything in 15 and 16, because we had to evaluate everything in 15 and 16 by September of this year. We will be far ahead of that schedule, because we have evaluated, televised, and inspected manholes, and actually gone out and done a lot of work in those areas. So that's really good news, very well ahead of the schedule that was in that consent decree. But then the consent decree requires you to look at Service Areas 10, 11, 12, and 13 on the east, if I, if I, east side of the river, I guess I put that in quotes, because it's kind of on the north side. But nevertheless, we will be evaluating televised reports, like Laura said, in that area, and then looking to put the equipment, the new televising equipment out into Service Areas 18 and 19 and look for the problems in there, to put those into the Phase 3 CIPP and remedial measures project. So that's a big project that will probably be designed in 2016, but won't be constructed until 2017. Other capital improvements projects, the dry-run interceptor and pumping station project should get, the construction on that should get started this spring. That will help alleviate wet weather flows that come down the 9th Street corridor. The Titus, also known as Midland Pumping Station Enforcement Project, is awaiting the results of the modeling, so that's a little ways off. Flow equalization basin overflow connection is, the design is nearly complete, to be submitted to DNR for approval. That will help eliminate overflows from the equalization basins out at the wastewater treatment plant. Long-term flow monitoring equipment, we're working to get that equipment purchased and installed by the time spring wet weather flows come. We'd like to capture the rainfall and flow monitoring events from the spring wet weather season. The environmentally beneficial project, you've heard a lot about the alley permeable pavement project that city engineering is doing that meets the requirements of the consent decree. And I'm sure Eric can answer questions if you had on how that's going. Last week, we were here to talk about the fats, oils, and grease program, so we won't talk about that anymore today unless you have questions. And then the last thing is the CMOM team discussion items. We just keep track of stuff that we have in meetings, like when our training is going on. And to be transparent to you, we've included some of those things about training and other miscellaneous things that we talk about in our weekly CMOM meetings. I think I'll stop there. Leave some time for questions. I think that we're doing a pretty good job of communicating with the regulators. We got an email back after our November report, I think it was a November report, that, from, I can't remember which agency, there's so many of them, we're submitting stuff to, but they thanked us for the submittal and said that the monthly CMOM reports were particularly helpful. So that's where we're at. We think we're in good shape, documenting things, trying to give you an idea of everything that's going out to the, to the agencies that are regulating us. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
John, I have a couple of questions. 18 and 19 generally, where are those? Is that like Audubon and 9th Street? Is that basically what those are, 18 and 19?
Laura, what?
About?
She says, Laura says yes.
Okay. Didn't we smoke test in one of those areas lately?
We smoke tested Southland area, which is further off to the south, and not necessarily in 18 and 19, right?
It's in, it's in 18, it's on the south.
Oh, it's on the south side of 18, okay. So that's good.
But 18 and 19, where are we going to start doing footing drains next?
Right, that's, that's where we're moving into next, when 15 and 16 get done. But 15 and 16 are ways away from being done. And that might be a question for Michelle and Craig as to, you know, if the program's going to be extended into areas, Service Areas 18 and 19.
You mean the $2,000 reimbursement?
Yes.
That program, but we gotta, we have to do it.
That's our plan.
Who's going to pay for it? Yeah.
I don't know that we have to do it. John Hall has suggested we do a targeted footing drain removal in those areas, so we do not necessarily have to disconnect every home. And so I think that's some of the research that still needs to be done. So I would caution all of you about promising citizens that things are going to be done, because the program has not been set up for the next service areas. We have done it for Service Areas 15 and 16 with the guidance of our agencies, and EPA and the DNR, and when we move to the next area, we will follow a similar process.
So we may, somebody may tell us in this part of 18, we got to do it, and this part of 18, we don't have to. That's what AECOM's doing.
We really don't know yet.
Will do.
There was a plan to do a targeted area, and I think that that's what we're going to be talking about tomorrow, is where we should be targeting our investigations and what type of work we should be doing and where.
Then I have one last question.
But watch for it in the next CMOM report. We'll report on our progress.
The overflows we had, under the consent decree, were those overflows violations or were those extraordinary events that wouldn't get us in trouble?
Right.
The last five we had?
Right. The storm event of December 12 through 14 caused flood conditions on Blackhawk Creek. We thought it was going to cause flood conditions on Cedar, the Cedar River, but they didn't quite reach flood conditions. But the consent decree says that if you are at flood condition on either Blackhawk Creek or the Cedar River, that you would not be in violation, you would not be fined for overflows, because it's flood conditions. And that's a very good provision to have in there that takes the fear of fines away if you're bypassing during a flood condition.
So the five we had would have been...
Even if they were enforcing, which they're not enforcing yet, there's a, there's a grace period that they're not enforcing fines. Even if that had kicked in, we would not have been fined for those bypasses. Thank you.
And that was something we negotiated with, I believe, or a change that was made that we asked for, right?
Right, right. It's very good to get that in there as evidence by what just happened in December.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In connection with anything having to do with 18 and 19, doesn't that have to be an amendment to the ordinance? Or doesn't it have to, isn't it a separate ordinance that has to be passed by council? Because I believe the ordinance, as written before, just dealt with 15 and 16.
That's correct. Yeah, it does have to be addressed. That's why it's premature to say anything about it. The program has to be designed and passed and all kinds of things before.
And it could possibly be a little bit different if we're specifically targeting particular areas.
So at that point in time, it might be the, it might be okay to introduce some other amendments to the ordinance that certain citizens have wanted to have passed for about a year now? So that would be appropriate at that time?
The proposals could be discussed at that time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So John, I know you weren't here at the time, but I think the reason that we picked 15 and 16 was because of the, I think, knowledge, not an assumption, but knowledge, that that is where the vast majority of these footing drain issues were? Is that correct? And I guess I'm looking at people that were around when that discussion went on. I mean, we didn't pull that out of a hat. We did that for a reason.
It was more, I think it was more to do with where we were told our SSOs were at. It's not about where the footing drains were at, it's about where our sanitary sewer system overflows are at, which is why we're talking about what we're talking about for the next areas. Our goal with this program, my goal with the financial planning for this program, was if we were going to be paying millions of dollars in fines to the EPA, I thought that cash would be better invested to correct our problems. And we were advised that the footing drains were a vast contributor to the problems in Service Areas 15 and 16. And that's why it made sense to me that instead of spending the money by sending it to federal government, we would be better off to invest it in the areas and correct the problems.
Right. But from a, from a code standpoint, I guess, that area of the city, the houses that were built there had these issues where, for example, Audubon, because of the vintage of the houses there, we're pretty certain there's not a whole lot of that same issue there, correct?
Are you meaning that the area we chose to do has a high percentage?
Right.
Yes, I would agree with that.
That alleviates, alleviates a large portion of the problems we're having overall throughout the city?
Correct. It should, I mean, Service Areas, the Service Area we chose was decided because the Hackett Lift Station had the most sanitary sewer overflows. I mean, that was the first contributing factor. The second was, like you said, the vintage of the house, what we think is being infiltrated because it's a wet area, things like that. So those were all the considerations taken into effect when I guess we chose that area.
And then the money that we used to pay the, up to $2,000 per homeowner in 15 and 16, where did that money come from?
I'm going to let Michelle answer that one. I don't know, magically appears.
I wasn't going to say that, Craig.
Some of it is being paid for directly at a sewer operation, some of it's being paid for with bonds issued for sewer purposes.
Okay, so I mean, ultimately taxpayers are paying for it, ultimately?
No, taxpayers aren't paying for it, sewer rate payers are paying for it. And that, those are different groups. Users, user fees are paying for it, not property taxpayers.
So Waterloo people, Waterloo businesses, people in Waterloo that pay. Sure, okay. And then one other quick question I had is, from an organizational chart, is the CMOM, is that a, is that a management position that has folks and reporting to them for day-to-day operation, or does that person just do their job? Or how's that set up? I guess I thought it was a one-man band, and that's kind of all they did, and I'm not sure that that's what's going on now, or maybe I misunderstood.
Well, we do have Mark Brandis as the CMOM specialist that was put in there, in that position, six months or so ago. And Laura's been in her position as CMOM tech for how long? Since September. And then, of course, the superintendent would be involved in that. So it is a team of those people, plus actually the sewer crew are part of the rating system, going out there televising and rating and everything. And there's one vacant position out there, the wastewater collection system supervisor's vacant, that would be an obvious person to have on the CMOM team. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah.
So it's not just a one person, it's, it's a group of several, including Brian Rath, the lead operator out there, who has really been my right-hand helper on all things, has been doing dual duty on operations of the plant, plus helping out on the CMOM program.
Right, thank you.
And I can't forget Evelyn Russell, too. And I can't forget Evelyn Russell, too, who's administrative secretary out there helping out.
We'll take one more question.
John, under Appendix Six, it's sewer report dash storm intake potentially connected to sanitary system. Do I read that correctly, that those two systems, there are places where they might be joined together, where they have to be separated?
There are a lot in that report.
And that...
Is that full report in here? That report of cross connections, potential cross connections from the storm sewer to the sanitary sewer identifies quite a few places where there's, we know that storm sewers discharged directly to the sanitary.
And what has to happen?
They have to be disconnected, and where possible, a storm sewer system put in there. So that's the plan, is to put storm sewers into those areas through city engineering over a period of however many years it takes to eliminate them all.
But currently, those are, those are adding to the SSOs?
They are a big contributor, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And just for the record, I'm gonna hand Councilmember Lynn this agreement that was dated, that was finally signed by Chief Judge, U.S. District Court, Northern District of Iowa, January 20th, 2016.
Thank you very much. All right, putting information out there so people can see it. Thank you very much, John, the rest of the team, great information. Feels like we're in good hands moving forward to address some of these challenges we have.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made with the proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's call Finance to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
And Mr. Jacobs is absent, so Mr. Morrissey.
Oh, Mr. Jacobs is here.
Oh, Mr. Jacobs is here.
Okay, we've had a roll call. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Make a motion on this?
A motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Also, the approval of the minutes, please.
Oh, and approval of the minutes as of January 19th, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
Motion, a second on the agenda, on the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. So we'll take the new business travel requests.
New travel request today. Eric Thorson, City Engineer, attend a class American Public Works Spring Conference in West Des Moines, April 6th through the 8th of this year, not to exceed $464. Brian Foster, Forestry Specialist, attend a class in Ames, Awa Shetree Short Course, February 24th and 25th, not to exceed $260. Thirdly, Tina Shellhorn, Electrical Foreman, Matt Lasek, Signal Foreman, Craig Henspin, Signal Tech Two, Roger Wooden, Electrics, Electrician, Kelby Haynes, Electrician, Nate Alderman, Electrician, attend a class. A R C Flash, seven NPA, seventy E Basic Transformers, and the DOE 2016 Impact, February 10th, not to exceed $840. Fourth, Mary Quentin Hart, Cedar Valley Coalition, travel to Washington, D.C., February 21st to 24th, not to exceed $2,070. And last, Officer Eric, or Erie, and Investigator Gergen, to attend a class I-L-E-E-T-A Training Conference, Rosemont, Illinois, March 13th through the 18th of this year, amount not to exceed $2,037.
Second.
Motion, request on the travel requests, is any discussion or questions in regards to that? Here, none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. And the pre-ops?
And the pre-ops. We have building maintenance, $3,132.66 for purchase of air curtain for library, building maintenance, $1,736.82 for credit cards and wireless network for Young Arena, central garage, $15,481.84 for replacement motor, street truck, 191001, central garage, $3,636.40 for replacement motor, greater blades, engineering, $1,000, or $150 for rain barrel for homeowners' workshop, leisure services, $1,422 for baseball and softball socks, leisure services, $3,886 for baseball, softball pants, leisure services, $13,750 for baseball jerseys for participants in optimist baseball and softball, offered for grades two through eight, leisure services, $8,199 for major league replica hats and visors, leisure services, $2,144 for baseball for optimist baseball program, sanitation, $7,591.79 for reline container box for truck seven, ten, sewer department, $5,302 plus $300 shipping, replacement gear, reducer for number two belt press, feed pump.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the pre-ops. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn?
I have a couple of questions. Building maintenance, the air curtain for the library, what's an air curtain? Is that when you walk in the door, there's...
Well, is that nice hot air right on the back of your neck?
Do you, are you paying for that, or is the library paying for that? I don't understand why you bring this forward rather than the library bring it forward. I'm just trying to figure out, budget time's coming and...
Yes, it comes out of the bond money for the library that we, I asked for, so it doesn't come out of their...
So it's in their...
Yeah, it doesn't come out of their budget, it comes out of the bond money that...
But it's in their maintenance budget?
It's in my maintenance budget.
Oh, it's in your budget?
Yeah. The library doesn't have really a maintenance budget. We do all the maintenance there, so...
Okay. That's what I'm asking. And then, the other question I had was, all that baseball stuff, we're buying that and reselling it to the players, are we?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, yeah, actually, the cost for that is included in the registration fee, so they pay for that upfront.
Thanks, thank you.
Anyone else? Here, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. There's no Budget Line Items Amendment this week, but we do have some bills, and that is $4,067,418.54. That's four, comma, zero, six, seven, comma, four, one, eight, point, five, four.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the bill's payment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second, that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Let's get ready for our January 25th council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, now we will have a prayer or a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We will have our Pledge of Allegiance done by Library Director, Stephen Nielsen. He's not here. He's not here. I will do it myself. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He missed his big moment.
Mr. Mayor? Like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and if you have the hard copy, it will, it should read, you should cross out Binstrow LLC and replace it with North Crossing LLC. Plus also, the minutes of January 19th, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second.
All right, motion has been made with the proper second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda.
Mr. Mayor, like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's 1A through 2C, and within that is the bill's payment, and the bill's payment this week is $4,067,418.54. That's four, comma, zero, six, seven, comma, four, one, eight, point, five, four.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Was that Mr. Morrissey?
Yes. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on parking lease agreement with Lederman Brothers Property Management Company LLC located adjacent to 403, 405 Jefferson Street.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, is there anyone on file for or against this item?
There were none.
None on file. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular issue? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution terminating a parking lease agreement with Agape Rehabilitation Agency, PCD slash B slash A, Agape Therapy originally approved on February 23rd, 2015 by Resolution Number 2015 dash 132.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, are there any questions on this item? Going a second time? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a parking lease agreement with Lederman Brothers Property Management Company LLC to lease eight city-owned parking spaces located adjacent to 403, 405 Jefferson Street, and for the city to lease eight parking spaces owned by Lederman Brothers Property Management Company LLC located adjacent to 403, 405 Jefferson Street, expiring, or spaces expiring December 31st, 2020, and automatically renewing on a year-to-year basis until terminated.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions on this item? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Item number three is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's Leisure Services Chemical Storage Building Project.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any comments on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion in to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any comments on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion in to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specification, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Where does the money come from to pay for this item? Is it from Leisure Services Golf Course Operations, or where's it come from?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, this is bond money, we're actually combining two projects. We had a project for a chemical storage building on the books in the CIP plan, that's partially funding it, and then we also have a project for a filling, a sprayer filling station. Basically, what we're doing here is combining two projects. We want to be able to properly store our chemicals, we want to be able to provide a spray fill station and an equipment washing station that will provide proper drainage and separation pits. This actually all kinda ties into the whole storm sewer situation, too, because this will properly handle this equip, this wash water so that it avoids storm sewer contamination. So, but that's a long answer, but I kinda wanted to get a little bit of that out there, but the funding is CIP combining two projects.
Then the CIP's paid back their bond money, we borrowed the money, then how do we pay back the bonds? Does it come out of your budget, or does it come out of a general?
That would be a question Michelle could answer better than I.
Yeah, that will come out of our general debt service levy that's paid by property taxes.
So everybody pays for his storage building?
Anybody pays property taxes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And so, but Paul, that the facility's gonna be used for the golf?
It's actually for golf. It's actually for golf and park equipment. Right. I mean, but it's not at Irvine. Right. It's not, it's located at the Campbell Avenue site. It's immediately adjacent to Irvine Golf Course, and some golf equipment will be washed at this washing station. But it's for the entire operation. Got you. All right, thank you.
Any questions, any others? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any more questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Leisure Services for review.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, please read the bids.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we provided an architect's estimate, but I'll provide that tonight if you like.
Please.
$289,733 for base bid and all alternates. I should mention several of those alternates can be opted in or out, and we'll have to do that to fit to our budget.
There were two bids. The first one was from Woodruff Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. The total base bid plus selected alternate is $365,200, 365,200.00. The second bid was from Matt Construction of Sumner, Iowa, and that total bid with alternates is $276,594, 276,594.00.
All right, thank you very much. If someone can take items four and five, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like, I'd move to adopt the following resolutions. Four, a resolution in support of the Campbell Baking Company Building, locally known as the Wonderbed Building, to be nominated for the National Register of Historic Places located at 325 Commercial Street, and authorize mayor to sign necessary documents. Five, a resolution approving three-year license fee agreement with Advanced Systems, Inc., in the amount of $12,500 with a 3% annual increase up to $17,830 for Laserfish Document Management Software.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can someone take six and seven, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving application to the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $10,000 with a $5,000 match by the city for Sportsplex event hosting equipment. Number seven, resolution approving notice of intent for NPDES coverage under general permit to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for fiscal year 2016 Midport Boulevard Extension Phase Three. Contract Number 894, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Would someone take number eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving development agreement with North Crossing LLC for the redevelopment of the Logan Plaza and surrounding land for the development of a multi-phase project with over 37,600 square feet of medical, office, restaurant, and convenience store development, adding 9.5 million in taxable value to the site, acquiring over 50 acres of development land for future projects, offering property tax rebates at 10 years at 50%, and 8 million in city TIF funds over an eight-year period, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Discussion.
Could I maybe ask that we have Mr. Anderson or somebody kind of give us the overview of this to get the conversation started?
Yeah. Eight million dollar question.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. What we have put together is working with a very successful local developer in Mr. Stro and his team. I mean, as you may be aware, they've been recently redeveloping the former Kmart Plaza site at San Martin and La Porte, so we are very much aware of their abilities and to redevelop a plaza-type development like this. Putting this package together, the goal is essentially to get redevelopment of the Logan Plaza area and surrounding land into the hands of positive developer with local ties of the city of Waterloo for positive redevelopment and remove the blight of the current conditions of the area. So, the development agreement is structured that all the Logan Plaza land owned by Mr. Robert Rappaport would be purchased. The bank building at the corner would be purchased, as we believe that's a key location for the redevelopment of the entire site. The Menards land, which is sitting vacant and not being planned for anything by Menards Corporation at this time, would be purchased, all for redevelopment purposes. Then as another part of the development agreement, Mr. Stro and his team will demolish the Logan Plaza area to make that site suitable for redevelopment. They have committed in multiple phases up through 2018 for the four projects listed there, which is two medical buildings, a convenience store, and a restaurant totaling about 37,600 square feet and 9.5 million dollars in taxable value. The medical buildings will be taxed, buildings, so they will contribute back to the repayment of the city's costs for making this put, being put together. Note, Mr. Stro is acquiring this property, doing the demolition. He'll have some infrastructure costs in there as well. And then the city of Waterloo is being deeded back the majority of the Menards land, so the city has additional land out there for development owned by the city of Waterloo. So, we therefore think that this project, not only, this agreement not only serves short-term needs of demolition and redevelopment occurring out there, but also serves long-term needs of the city of Waterloo to really foster some new economic development in this area.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment first, and then we'll come back to counsel.
David Drier, excuse me? David Drier, 3145 West Fourth Street. Noel answered two of my questions. But in past meetings, I asked about whether there was money that we can afford from a TIF. We combined the two TIFs, and at the time, it was told, it was said that there was $2.5 million in the two TIFs combined. Are we going to generate from giving them a 50% tax abatement, $1 million over the next eight years, each year, to be able to pay for this $1 million we're going to give them? That's concerned to me, otherwise, we're going to have to start bonding again to make up the difference, or it's going to go on to property taxes, or it's going to go somewhere that, again, the public pays for this development. I like to hear the fact that he's going to need the Menards land back. I like to hear he's going to buy it from the present owner and tear it all down. We don't have to tear it down and pay for that and then sub it to him for a buck. But that thought of, where's that extra money going to come from? Because now we're robbing Midport, and I see something on the agenda about some development out of Midport that we're going to need money for. Somewhere along the line, it looks to me like these figures are starting to add up too fast, and we're ending up going to be on the short end of the stick as the taxpayer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Willie Smith, 2260 Ashland Avenue. I hate to say it, but I'm on the north end of Waterloo. My hat's off to the new mayor, Noel Anderson. We're finally going to get something done with Logan Plaza. It's been a eyesore for years. It's out in my neighborhood where our new IV is. It's just great to hear that things are going to move forward. Ben Stro is a former employer of mine, pretty good fellow. Way out of our dip since, of course. But he done a wonderful job at Kmart, Crossroads, and I think he could do a great job over there, Logan Plaza. I'd love to see a 24-hour restaurant for the hospital's sake. You know, there's people in that hospital all the time that needing a place to go, and after five or six o'clock, everything's closed up. So, he might make a note with that as far as taking care of the people at Allen Hospital and the other folks in the area. We've been needing it a long time. And talk about that 50 acres that Menards was supposed to build on. We definitely could use a Menards or something like it out there. And I don't know if the city can do anything about that with Ben Stro, but I know Ben will do a good job. And I thank you again for taking the time to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Dufekaser, 542 Second Street, Waterloo. Okay, now, we're, again, we're giving Mr. Stro. I don't know Mr. Stro personally, but he's a pretty decent guy, really good intentions. What's our guarantee for citizens of Waterloo taxpayers to be reassured that he's not just going to take the money and change course, or skip town, or? What guarantee we have that he won't actually do what he says he intends to do?
That's a, that's a, that's a good question. We actually are, have a development agreement that we have with him as a developer. I think we also have, he is from the community. He also has other projects that he's worked on with the community as well. The one that's most notable, he also owns a business here, if I'm not mistaken, as well as an A-line. So, he has employees here, he has business here. He's invested and was born and raised here. But the Kmart portion that the gentleman spoke about just a little bit earlier, that's actually one of his projects as well, and it's actually helped to spur interest development in a location that needed some necessary improvement. So, we're hoping that track record and the fact that we have a signed development agreement with our attorney, with his attorney, will hold him to that.
Thank you. We only pray for the best, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
Eric Johnson with the Beecher Law Firm here on behalf of Ben Stro. Mr. Stro, sorry he couldn't be here. He's got a business engagement that's actually taken him out of town for a few weeks. But he's in communication via phone and email, and I know he's been reaching out and talking with Noel about this. This is a project he's been working on for quite a while now, probably six months, trying to get the pieces together, trying to get drawings, trying to partner with those parties in the area that you need to partner with to make this go. And he's pretty excited. He thinks this is a good project. This is an area that certainly needs some help. I mean, that's, you know, this is a brownfield area or a grayfield area, an area that's been dilapidated, and it's got a lot of potential, and he sees that potential, just like on Kmart Plaza. He saw the potential there. I think maybe some of you scratched your heads when he proposed that and thought, I wonder if that's going to take off? I wonder if that project's really going to work? Myself, maybe too, a little bit. But it has, and anybody that's been out there recently. I mean, that place looks great, and it just continues to grow and the things happening out there. And I think this is set also, hopefully, to do the same thing. As the citizen question whether this, how do we hold him accountable? Well, you've got a development agreement, and he's got some pretty stiff requirements of things he needs to do. And obviously, his incentive is if he doesn't do those things, he doesn't get the money. And this isn't money that you're giving upfront. He sure wishes you were, because you can sort of imagine, you've got a couple bank, we've got one banker for sure here, who'd tell you what the carrying cost on that many millions of dollars is over eight years. That's a lot of money. But, you know, he's committed to this. He's partnered with Allen Hospital for some of that. And we think that this could be a catalyst for some great things to happen on the north end. And, you know, that 63 revitalization that we're doing, that's sure done a lot of good things, I think, over there, but this will just continue that. So, if there are any specific questions that you've got on the project, glad to answer them. But we have been working with, originally, Mayor Clark and Councilman Hart, but now Mayor Hart and Noel and his team for some time. So, we appreciate the support that they've given as we've worked through some of these issues.
Questions?
Erica, and I'm not sure to what degree you can answer some of these questions, but so as far as the Unity Point arrangements, and then the restaurant and the convenience store, I think is what I read, those discussions are to the point of they've been consummated? Or are you to the, being able to say that, or without saying any names?
Yeah. No, they've not been consummated. So, you know, that's part, that's part of the risk the developer's taking on this, that he's acquiring property, but he feels comfortable enough in acquiring that property with where he's at in those negotiations, that he's not going to end up with this property and then not get the city reimbursement, because he hasn't met the development agreement. But those, those discussions and negotiations are pretty far down the road. And part of it, finalizing it, you know, is putting this, putting this in place, so he can finalize what incentives he can give to those parties also.
And for the record, you know, for the folks in the audience and the folks watching at home that don't necessarily see everything we see, in addition to the North Crossing LLC, he also is making a personal guarantee on this project too, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, I think it's a great project. I think it moves Waterloo ahead, especially as a lot of folks enter Waterloo from the north, and that's a major roadway there. And so, I think this moves us ahead and does a great deal for our image of our city and growth and business opportunities and jobs. One question I would like us to think about, and maybe we can't answer that tonight, but down the road, we've kind of taken our TIF money and spent it all on one project. So, if we know that we have other opportunities we want, we hope to have in that area, such as the excess Menards land and so forth, how would we then support those projects as well, since it seems that we've moved a lot of our funds to this one particular project?
You mean for the, within that district?
As far as future expansion and growth of other developers, how would we support them as well?
Noel, you want to answer that? This is also paying into that district as well, right? 50%?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. And obviously, you know, someone mentioned that the Hy-Vee project and things like that. So, some of those existing projects are also getting near ending their rebate, so we should be seeing some more taxable value coming into the TIF districts as well. But we also think that, you know, our partnership with this will also set up a lot of those lots to allow a lot of smaller projects to occur without needing a lot of more, a lot of extra cash in there. Obviously, if we had a large project that would want to go on the 50 acres, hopefully, that project would be generating enough new taxable value as well to give us the ability to have some cash through rebates or something like that to make that project happen as well.
What's the cost of the, is there a frontage road that will be added eventually? And what is the project? And what is the projected cost of that?
I don't know if we have any estimates exactly on the frontage road or, or exactly how it will lie. I think in the development agreement it even notes, we'll talk about the existing frontage road along Highway 63 and vacating portions of that. We want to talk to the car wash owner, we want to talk to the McDonald's, to talk to them about the overall development of the area and where frontage roads should go, and then how to lay those out.
And he also has to put in a parking lot as well.
That parking lot's in pretty rough shape, so I'm sure-
I don't know if you've driven through it, but, uh, but the-
He may have some people here that'll be looking directly at that tonight, so.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I have several questions, if it's okay.
Yeah.
I suppose they'd probably be answered by Noel, I suppose. Um, now, I'm referring to the development agreement you gave me last Friday, and I haven't had time really to read the new one you just gave me. So, I apologize if some of the stuff doesn't-
No, that's fine.
Uh, 4A, it says the city agrees to, they're talking about demolition, but we're not, we're not demolishing anything, isn't the, it's kind of confusing the way that paragraph reads, that the city agrees to enable, help the developer accomplish these things. The first 4A was, uh, demolition of the old Logan Plaza building, but I don't see that now. Is that eliminated on the new development agreement? Is that what happened?
So are we demolishing or are they demolishing? Is that the question?
Yeah, it's kind of confusing. The original development agreement, 4A.
They are demolishing it. Now, I apologize, I have the newer one, so I'm trying to find where it went in there.
Who's demolishing the building?
In the initial draft, the ci, the city was going to demolish, and, um, he took that upon himself, and so that's certainly his intent, that he's, he's responsible all demolition. I thought that got changed in the documents, but maybe in the heading it still said demolition.
Well, it's not in the new documents, but it was the one I studied over the weekend. It's gone.
Yeah, no, yeah, no. The, the, he's in charge of demolition, and that should have been agreements long ago, because that, that changed.
So we got that one, so the developer is demolishing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, it's actually under number three, the second paragraph, it talks about the company will demolish, remove all debris and all that.
Your question?
Oh, that's where it went, okay. That was exactly 4A before. Who builds the roads and the infrastructure? Who does the interior roads, sewer, water? Us or the developer?
The developer would be responsible for infrastructure provisions to the site at this point. Um, and you can kind of see on the, uh, the attached layout that they showed, um, kind of in the development area, they showed the potential of having some, uh, road, new road systems. You know, as, as, uh, kind of the road layout through the middle there, you know, they may be able to accomplish that just as a, an access easement, it may not actually be a public road going through there, but it could be an access easement through their parking lot, kind of like you'd see through the Target parking lot or something like that, where they just delineate it as a, as an access point. That'll be things that they kind of figure out as they go along for the specific layout and probably some of the requirements of some of the, the projects that they're working on.
But that east-west road up on top, that would be ours, wouldn't it?
It says future through street up there at Heath Street, and of course, back when the Menards project was looking at this area, Heath was always envisioned as being a, at some point, a signalized intersection as traffic would increase. So I would imagine that that would be a public street up there that we'd address in the future. It is shown on our, kind of our future development area, so at this point, it would look like that street would be our responsibility. Again, as we get a project up there that, that would need to go through, we'd work on that through the project development agreement.
The Courier article says the eight millions for land acquisition and site development cost. The development agreement says eight millions for excess Menards property. What, which, which is, which the eight million dollars for?
I think there was some wording added in there to talk about that, that, uh, if you find it.
The Courier showed a street from 4th Street up through there to 63, uh, access road. Now, I'd encourage everybody, I'm Smith again, I'd encourage everybody to go out and look at that site. Maybe some of you don't even know that area. I would encourage you to go look and see what the buildings look like and the area looks like.
Mr. Smith, uh, thank you. This is, this is, uh, an opportunity right now for us to be able to comment. Uh, Mr. Lynn and everyone has asked some very decent questions right now because-
Sorry.
-a couple of things had changed, so we're just getting things finalized so people can feel comfortable with the information they received this afternoon. So, uh, perfectly, perfectly good question, so, um, you're forgiven this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Real quick question, Mr.-
He has, he has the, he has the-
Oh, right.
He has the floor.
Just to try to answer that, I can't find exact words out in here, there, I know there's some wording put in there by the bonding council that was discussing that, that the 8.8 million is really to help pay for the entire land purchase out there of Logan Plaza, of, of the bank building, of the Menards property, plus demolition and infrastructure costs is what the eight, not the 8.8, the eight million.
Okay. On the, on the new, I was quick looking at this, someplace in here, I thought it said, that 4A's, 4A?
Yeah.
The proportion of the purchase price that exceeds fair market value of the excess property is paid to the company as a development grant, blah, blah, blah. Um, yeah. How do, are we gonna break that out? I mean, when we, you know what I'm trying to say? So the public knows that, okay, we bought the Menards property for five million, and the three million went to him for development cost. Will we break that out, or?
He's, he's actually going to, going to purchase it.
Well, with the, the Menards property.
So, Mr. Lynn, let me try and answer as best I can. You know, there's different parts that this money would be used for. Hopefully, less than six million will go towards property acquisition of the Rappaport site, the former bank site, and the Menards site. That's all fronted by Mr. Stroh. The demolition costs are going to be probably a half million or greater. Um, the carrying cost on that money, once again, the way you're paying this over eight years, someone do the math real quick, at five percent, which hopefully that's where he'll be at, probably reasonably, he's got great credit, but this is sort of the, a little bit of a push of a project. Um, you know, he's gonna be looking at probably over a million dollars of carrying cost that he's going to pay in interest. Then hopefully, everything else goes towards site infrastructure. Will that cover it all? No. Um, he's going to have to put in money that hopefully he's gonna make off, up off of the sale of land or leasing of land for these various sites. So, it, it's not a windfall by any means, and anybody thinks that, um, you know, I mean, we've been, I've brought projects here over the past 10 years that people thought were gonna go, and they just didn't, um, you know, and so it's, uh, you know, this is to really get, to get it to ground zero and start fresh is what we're trying to do.
And, and another thing we need to add to that is the portion, a large portion of the Menards property will come back, come back to the city. So we'll have, we'll, we'll end up with developmental land for us to be able to utilize too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so, so really, the Logan Plaza land, he's buying all the land, the Logan Plaza land, land is really his first phase development, and all the rest goes back to the city as excess property. Hopefully, he, through his, um, you know, momentum, is the one that develops that. But there is a out that if some other good project comes, that you have the right to use, to, to go with somebody else for that project.
There, uh, can I continue?
Yes, sir. We'll move to Mr. Morrissey.
The hospital's a key partner, according to Courier. If the hospital, uh, becomes a, an owner, would they pay taxes? Would the hospital pay taxes then?
It, it's part of the agreement that all development would be taxed property, um, so, um-
They would pay taxes.
They would pay taxes.
Um, it, it, there's-
That, that's not what's intended right now, that, that somebody else will build and lease back, is what's intended now, and that, that owner will pay normal taxes like any other, uh, owner of real estate.
But the hospital could buy from him and not pay taxes.
Well, then his development agreement has big problems, so, that's one, that's one of the requirements of the development agreement, is that all, all development will be taxed property.
He just wouldn't get rebate on that parcel? Or it doesn't void everything?
Well, I, I think, depending on, I mean, depending on what happened, if he met all of his other requirements, I suppose he could sell it, but, um, that, that, that certainly isn't any, anything on the radar at this moment. And we've got a big hurdle of what we're promising will be developed before he could even think about that.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, if he could forfeit tax rebates by not complying with timelines, is there any way he can forfeit the eight million dollars?
By not completing the project, yes.
It doesn't say that in development agreement, does it?
I think, I believe it does.
Yes, there's standard wording in there for, it becomes null and void if-
Sure, where is it? Well, that's okay, Noel. Uh, can I sit down with you and go through some of this stuff?
Sure.
Would that be okay? Would that be better? And the only, the only comment I might make is, and I've had questions from people all weekend, um, Tech Works, 562 jobs, 275,000 visitors, 2.9 million dollar annual sales, um, I don't know, what's a 50, 75 million dollar project? We're putting 12.75 million into it, cash. This is a 9.5 million dollar project, and we're putting eight million dollars into it. That's 85% of the cost.
We've been 20 million in it?
We're, we're participating in Tech Works with different repayment streams, it's 20.75 million. I do want to clarify that.
But some of those are from that state program and-
The repayment stream is, but we are still going to issue bonds in that amount.
And the developer's gonna pay the interest on those bonds?
Are we, did we, which project we talking about?
That is Tech Works. I'm wondering if there's a difference between the two.
Well, I'm just trying to get apples to apples. When I'm trying to look at whether this is a, um-
Is this a-
Cash on cash. What is our investment and what does it produce? And I'm ju, the only thing I'm seeing is, we're putting in eight million, and I'm not even talking about the rebates, and they're putting in, they're gonna develop 9.5 million. I don't care what their costs are, their development goal is 9.5 million dollars in value. I would think they would try to put less than that in it, otherwise, they're not a very good, they're not rational business, putting more money in it than the-
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, don't-
And I'm just asking these questions, because I have to get my-
No, it, it's a very good question, but don't forget, we're getting 50 acres of land to develop. So, I mean, if, when you're looking at the city's expenditure of the eight million, let's say that we get two big box projects to go on those, on our 50 acres, and now we have another 30 million dollars worth of taxable value going out there. So, you're, if, there's kind of an X factor of the, again, you're, you're, we're putting this together as kind of a, a development agreement to, again, create some immediate short-term projects out there, but there's also long-term potential with this development agreement for that 50-acre land, as well as there's additional sites on the portion that Mr. Stroh will own outright, right at the beginning. I mean, he could get three other restaurants or something like that out there. So there's a lot more potential out here with what we're putting forth for the risk, in our opinion.
On that Menards excess land, he can claim the back for a dollar.
With a project?
Yeah, so if we put in five million, he can get the five million dollars worth of land per dollar.
And obviously, if we got another large project out there that would substantiate that amount of land, we'd still be in the same positive position of getting more development out there, more taxable value.
All right. Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just had a question, was I, I didn't know if the general public, if the audience had finished what they were doing, as far as talking before it came to us to talk. I did, I did, I figured there was probably other people out there that wanted to talk.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, we haven't closed off discussion yet, so, um, whether it's council or whether it's the audience, but is there anyone in the audience that, uh, that may have questions or comments about this particular item? Back to council. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, finally, after, what, two to three decades of decline out there and, um, people wondering whatever was going to happen out there, it was of positive nature, we, something's happening out there. And, uh, I appreciate the work being done here, I appreciate Mr. Stroh, uh, coming forward as, and, and being a community person rather than having a absent landlord taking, uh, over a property out there and really not doing anything with it for, uh, the period of time that it has, uh, gone into, uh, been degraded. So, uh, I, I appreciate this, and I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly support, uh, this resolution.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, um, and I think to follow up on Councilman Jacobs and also Councilman Morrissey's, uh, comments, I think everybody's very, uh, supportive and, and excited about this. I think it's, uh, also our due diligence to ask questions. I mean, I think that's kind of one of the reasons we're here. I just had a couple other questions. The CHMA Holdings, Noel, can you tell us who that is? They're the ones that apparently own the, I'm assuming they own the bank facility?
Um, I cannot, no, I do not know who it is. I know that Mr. Stroh's been in contact with them, but I'm not sure exactly who that is.
Gotcha, okay. And then, can I ask you also, the, um, going back to the one million dollars a year coming out of that merged TIF district, today, just based on what we know is being generated out of the new merged district, will that one million pretty much tap out the income out of that merged district, so that, going back to Councilman, uh, Jacobs' question, that kind of hinders us from being able to do anything else there, or are we expecting we're gonna have excess income?
I believe I have the answer to that unless Michelle gets up right after I get done talking. Um, but, no, I believe right now we're projecting to have at least 1.3 million in there, so we would still have some funds available for other projects if they came forth.
Okay. And then, uh, just two other things. One is, and I, I don't know Mr. Stroh, and so I certainly don't want him, uh, taking offense to this, but this is the same question I asked of Mr. Blackwell regarding the Tech Works thing. When we've got a personal guarantee like this, have we vetted him to some reasonable level that we know that personal guarantee is a valid guarantee, or, or are we just kind of taking people's words for it? And I'm not sure whose job that is, but, uh, does anybody have an answer to that?
We haven't seen anything yet. Um, obviously, we'll probably have some information provided to us, it looks like Eric will have something to-
Representative here.
So, Mr. Stroh is a businessman here in town, and, uh, those of you that know him, he has started a business really from scratch. Um, A-line EDS, um, stands for Environmental Decommissioning Services, and, uh, they're a nationwide business, hence he's out on the east coast, he told me under 26 inches of snow right now in Philadelphia. Uh, but they, um, nationally tear power, power plants, um, and, um, you know, it's a great business, they're out on Dearborn, um, and they have done expansion after expansion after expansion, not to mention just a recent, um, headquarters they built, built out there for a couple million dollars. Um, it, it's a great business, he employs a lot of people. I'm sure if you, I don't think you've ever asked for, um, financial statements from anybody else, um, but, um, I, you know, I, I would just tell you that, uh, he's, he's got a, a great record as a businessperson in the community.
And again, I, I don't mean to be offending anybody, but I mean, I, I don't know what the value of a personal guarantee is if we don't know the, you know, the financial wherewithal of that guarantee. I mean, am I missing something here, Eric, or is that a valid question?
Yeah, no, you're not, and, um, but, uh, that, that hasn't been a policy of yours in the past, I can tell you, because I've done-
Didn't we do that with Blackwell? I thought I was told-
Hey, I'm gonna have to say, um, we, I did review Mr. Blackwell's, and so it may be appropriate with this type of development and this much that's being requested, that a similar process be prob- be followed. That's up to...
And Eric, that's why I brought it up, because I was pretty sure we did this with Mr. Blackwell and...
No, I understand Mr. Blackwell. All I'm saying is I've done dozens of these, and it's never been requested in the past, but that's council's prerogative.
And, you know, there were some other circumstances that were involved with Mr. Blackwell's situation that got resolved in court. I think what we had before us, you know, I haven't stopped any questions, you know. Every question has been a valid question when you're about to make an eight to 10-year commitment to a person for this much money. So, all questions are great questions. I think he has a track record, and I'm not, I'm just speaking not from a personal element, but if you take a look at what's happened over in the Kmart Plaza area, that was one that council had went out for, worked with the developer, made that happen. We're hoping for the same thing to happen with this particular property, who we know if we spent any time on any part of this community, one of the questions that came up with people are, what are you doing to that particular site over there? When are we going to tear down that blight and put something else in place? I think we have a great opportunity, good questions tonight, but I think it's time to move forward so we can get this site developed with a reputable...
Cool enough, if I could, I'd just like to...
I'm not done.
Okay.
But I think we have a great opportunity for us to move forward, and, you know, the residents are expecting it. I've also had many questions over the past year, 10 years, about how are we going to develop this, how it's going to be done. So, this is the opportunity we have before us. It's not like our doors are being kicked down right now for someone to come over there. This would be a great anchor to move forward. And also, when we take a look at the situation it had with Menards that left a bad taste and a lot of our mouths, I think this is the time for us to move forward. I don't have a vote, you do. You work with constituents, you heard from them about what they would like to see happen. So, after Councilman Schmidt, if there's no other questions, let's go ahead and move forward.
So, I was just going to suggest that, again, going back to Noel, I think, if I'm not mistaken, this is kind of a unique arrangement that we're doing here. And I guess I was kind of hoping you were going to make that part of your overview, that normally, instead of us fronting the money, instead of us paying for the demolition and doing some of this stuff, Mr. Stroh and his company is doing that. And I think that's something unique, and would you like to talk about that a little more, Noel, because I think it's a good deal?
I certainly can. I always feel like you guys don't want to hear me talk anymore, but...
Let's push the...
No, I mean, yeah, this is, this is a very good partnership, I believe. And again, I think Eric kind of talked about it a little bit, too. There's some risk involved, obviously, by Mr. Stroh, but he feels very confident in this project, and that's why he's kind of stepped forward to do this. You know, it's been 10 years since the Menards announcement, and we've had very little success in having anyone look at this site. So, him stepping up to do this and the ability that he is to kind of move ahead, forwarding the cash and the development to do this while we pay him through, you know, the setup of the TIF districts to do that, is an excellent opportunity for both of us to move ahead with this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one question, and this is direct to City Attorney Zellifer. Could you just answer the question as to why this particular subject does not require three readings and just as a resolution and can be passed by a resolution? Why would this not require three readings? Or Susie?
We're not selling any property.
Okay.
That's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by anyone? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Abstain.
On what grounds?
Um...
Information, timeliness?
In our conduct of meetings, is there anything about why abstain? Do I have to? I mean, I'll tell you, there's nothing in our conduct of meetings procedure, but I'm not...
I was just thinking it was information.
I'm not fully informed.
Okay.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Good discussion, great discussion, great questions. Appreciate it, council and community. This is oral presentation time, and we have a speaker here to join us, Mr. Dave Nagel, and it is with regards to certain sale of tract. So, good evening, Mr. Nagel.
Good evening, Your Honor. Congratulations. You're a light...
Thank you, sir.
And to the council, new and old. I listened last week to Mr. Zellifer. Zellifer described my client's position with regards to the controversy surrounding Sunnyside. And they were described as people who were simply interested in wasting the taxpayers' money, who would sue you if you tried to tie your shoes wrong, who weren't interested in the development of this land, who filed a frivolous lawsuit to the Supreme Court, hadn't done anything about it, and were a quagmire and it's all the taxpayer's fault. And I brought with me for Mr. Zellifer the obituaries and editorials surrounding the death of Bob Molinaro and Tunis and Hartalk, who have collectively given a ton of money and time and effort to this community. And although both are now passed, it was their motivation that brought the lawsuit, which is still joined by district, former retired District Court Judge Lynn Lieber. And their position was, this type of property should have been put to the public and sold to the benefit of the community, rather than given for a dollar to a former city official. And if the city will sell it properly on the open market, all the lawsuits would go away. We're not more interested in spending our own legal fees on this, but we felt very strongly, they felt very strongly, that this practice of giving money, property, to the city attorney and the former mayor is a practice that needs review, fortunately, I hope, by this new council. It wasn't a quagmire. It wasn't a big legal issue. The code said that you got to offer it to the former owners and the previous owners, unused right-of-way. The Supreme Court looked at this tough issue that Mr. Zellifer described and said, six to nothing, no, you got to offer it for sale to previous and current land, or current adjoining landowners and previous owners. We came back and the city said, well, we'll follow it, but we'll do it a little bit different. We're going to, first of all, say Sunnyside South has it, we're going to give them a 1 point or 1.9 up to $2 million lien on the property, and we're going to declare that they're the owner. But we're trying to follow the code. We disagreed with that, and at least in one aspect, the District Court agreed with us that, well, you can't use a retroactive appraisal. So, okay, but there are two other questions before the court that the court didn't rule on that we now have asked the Supreme Court to rule on. And I'm going to tell you something you haven't been told. It's Mr. Molinaro's contention or is the state's contention, and the taxpayers are saying is, you don't owe a dime on that contract, and you can't be sued for it, because the Supreme Court declared that contract void. And it's our position, and I'm not attempting to give you legal advice, but it's our position that it can't be enforced, and they don't get a priority in purchase. There's one other point in this, since we're talking about how unique and quagmires this was, we went to the Department of Transportation, and the testimonies there, in the court record, the Department of Transportation said, the DOT said, that no city in the state of Iowa, no city in the state of Iowa has ever tried to sell unused right-of-way in the manner which Waterloo did. And they also said, had they been asked, they would have told you that. And at the retrial, they said they'd never heard of attaching a lien to property and covered it before it's offered for sale, as the city attempted to do on the second. Then finally, lastly, I heard about mediation. Our mediation offer was that if the Sunnyside South will give the city a fair sum of money for the property, will you exercise our right as landowners and purchase it and give the money to the city? We'll buy lots parcel one and parcel two at a fair price and turn the money over to the city and turn the property over to Sunnyside South. We were not, as told by Mr. Zellifer, offered anything other than this. We were offered, one, that we had to dismiss our lawsuit, two, we had to waive our right to purchase the property, and three, then the city would follow the law. Now, it seems prudent to me, from my client's standpoint, the Supreme Court's being asked to decide whether you owe the property and whether a lien can be put against it. It would be my client's position, it would be prudent to wait until that's resolved. I see my time has expired. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. I'll remain for questions if there are any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nagel.
Thank you.
All right, still oral presentations. Come on down.
Leah Morrison, 2210 Falls Avenue. Believe it or not, I don't want to talk about Sunnyside or TIF, I want to talk about public safety. A few months ago, I had the opportunity to do a police ride-along. During the ride-along, the officers shared several opportunities for efficiency. Given that you were at the beginning of a new budget cycle, I think this is the perfect time to share those two suggestions with you. Our police interview rooms are fully equipped with video and audio recordings. After the officers complete the interviews, they have to transcribe the interviews. During my tour, I saw three or four officers in a room with headphones on. They would listen a little, type of little. With all due respect to the officers and their typing speed, one has to wonder what especially trained transcriptionists could do in comparison to the time the officers are spending transcribing. How many man-hours could we save by having one transcriptionist handle this administrative task for the entire department? That would allow us to put our officers on the streets using their law enforcement skills for public safety. I don't have specific data on the number of man-hours this would save, but I think our officer's suggestion would warrant a cost-benefit analysis before you go into the next budget cycle. My second suggestion I want to talk about also relates to their man-hours. When the city and the county merged the 911 call center, the county's administrative policy superseded how the city previously handled non-police calls. The example the officers gave me was that if a 911 caller calls in for frozen water pipes, and they specifically request a police officer, we have to send an officer. The call is immediately dispatched from the call center to the officer. We previously would have allowed a desk sergeant to handle that call. While the officers were explaining this situation, I heard the same desk sergeant take a call from a concerned citizen answering questions about child custody. So, I'd like to ask that we look at a conversation with the county and how we handle the non-police calls, and that would give us a potential to save more man-hours. Budgets are tight everywhere, and these two simple solutions offered by the officers could be a way to increase man-hours without breaking the budget. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I am Christopher Kazir, 514 East Second Street, Waterloo. I'm also talking about public safety in regards to the snow removal from the curb cuts and sidewalks of the Sunnyside Street of Waterloo. My, due to last snowstorm, my intersection on East Second Franklin was just cleared late last night or this morning. It's been several days since the last snowstorm we had. Basically, I've been trapped in my unit for the last few days. And I'm just wondering how many other people need to have the services for cleaning the snow removal for the curb cuts and sidewalks. But we get to do the best job we can, but please inform for improvement. Thank you, Kenny, for my time.
All right, thank you.
Your pleasure.
I'm Willie Mae Wright of 327 Almond Street. I don't have a complaint. I have a congratulatory for you, council and mayor, and for Mr. Stroh to be able to make an agreement with the former owner of the Logan Plaza. Thank you so much. We've been trying to deal with that for over 20 years, so I am very happy to see that something is being done with Logan Plaza. Thank you.
All right, thank you, former Councilwoman Willie Mae Wright.
David Goodson, 226 Kamala Avenue. And no complaint here either, just wanted to, I've got a group of young black males here with me, part of my program, and we wanted to congratulate the city's first black mayor and hopefully shake his hand and get a picture after council meeting. Thank you.
All right. By the way, I got that meatloaf waiting for me at home, but I...
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. You know, I come to these meetings, I hear how Waterloo is growing, so I called the library the other day to find out whether our population growth has been since 1980. And this is their figures. They told me we have lost 7,000 in Waterloo. Then I asked about Cedar Falls. Cedar Falls has gained 4,000. So, I guess I don't know where our growth is, so... But congratulations on the north end. I guess that's what the gentleman called it. I was raised there, so give me an alp bag out there, will you?
All right. All right, thank you.
I had the experience at 4:30 this afternoon. I made a mistake and went down Amesboro again. We got down to Downing, caught the light red as an emergency vehicle comes screaming out of the fire station, and we had a major traffic jam. We had cars going every direction. Now, it was snowing, slippery. I was doing 20 mile an hour, missed two cars by I don't know how. The ambulance did get around by going completely out of the lanes. The people that were there saw that what they were trying to do was maneuver in a two-wheel-drive situation. That is going to cause one tremendous lawsuit one day, because you cannot move that many vehicles that tight in one block. We've done the same thing over here at Mitchell. We've done the same thing over here on Franklin Street now. We need a little bit more room to get our cars around. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Motioner seeing foul. Earl Comanson adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.